So folks, as you get logged in, hopefully you can all hear me. My name is Renee Klein. I'm going to be your moderator tonight and we're going to get started in just a couple of moments. So I think we're going to go ahead and get started because we are broadcasting and we want to be sensitive to people's time, starting and ending on time. So welcome everyone and thank you for joining. Again, my name is Renee Klein and I'm going to be your moderator tonight. We are here to listen to and ask questions of candidates for the position of County Commissioner, District 2. And this is our first online candidate forum, so bear with us if things don't go exactly perfectly. Hopefully you've all been getting used to the Zoom world and we're all learning a lot about how to make these things happen. Candidate forums are important. This is our first one that we have done online and we appreciate you being here because learning about how these candidates feel about different issues is really important. Participating in our democracy is one of the most important things we can do as citizens. And this is a particularly important time in our county and our state and indeed our nation. We're very excited to have three candidates for County Commissioner, District 2. So we're going to be excited to welcome and hear from Lorna Smith, Amanda Finaro, and Heidi Eisenhower. Our county commissioners serve for a four-year term. They define high-level goals and long-range outcomes for our county and they help choose the ways and means to achieve those outcomes. And so we also want to thank our media sponsor, KPTZ. Thank you, KPTZ. I can see you there. They are live broadcasting this debate and we also want to thank the leader and the Peninsula Daily News who will be covering this forum. We always appreciate having the media on hand because folks that are not able to participate live can learn about the information later on. So as we begin, a couple of things, we'll talk about some ground rules, but you also probably are familiar now up in the top right corner of your Zoom setting, there are Speaker View and Gallery View. You might prefer to set that for Speaker View so that you can actually see everybody large as opposed to all the little squares. That would be Gallery View, but you can set that how you'd like. And I'd like to invite both Dennis Tenno of the League of Women Voters and Catherine Bucannon of AAUW to say a few words. And we're going to start with Dennis. If you could join us, Dennis?
Hi there. My name is Dennis Tenno and I am the Chair of the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. Its mission is to promote the informed and active participation of citizens in government and to influence public policy through education and advocacy. Membership in the League is open to all women and men. Voting members must be citizens aged 18 and older. We also participate in the State League Voters Education Project, Vote411. Around July 10th, vote411.org, you will be able to see all the races on our primary election ballot and answers given by participating candidates at all levels, from local to federal. We will be urging all candidates to participate by answering the questions that have just been sent out by the State League. That's at vote with a capital V, vote411.org. And now I would like to introduce Catherine Buchanan, Director of Public Policy and Candidate Forums for the American Association of University Women, Jefferson County.
Thank you, Dennis. Yes, my name is Catherine Buchanan. I'm the Public Policy Director for our local branch of AAUW. We have over 200 members. We are co-sponsoring the forum with the League of Women Voters, as you know, and KPTZ. We are a nonpartisan organization. One of our tenets and policies is voter education and participation is one of our goals, which is why we're co-sponsoring this forum. We advocate for equity in public policy. And we thank you for participating in your government by attending this Zoom meeting. Thank you to the League and to KPTZ and welcome to the candidates.
Thank you, Catherine. So it's great to have the League of Women Voters, Jefferson County, and AAUW, Port Townsend, and KPTZ, lots of volunteers, many volunteers. I want to thank all of you who helped put this together. As you can imagine, there were several dry runs to figure out how to make this all work and how to do the handoff. A few ground rules for tonight. This is obviously a little different than our normal candidate forums since we're online. First, that you'll note that all of the microphones have been muted except for the candidates. And so this enables all of us to listen quietly and respectfully without background noises. And we have also disabled the chat feature normally available in Zoom, so there are no distracting side conversations. Already talked about Gallery View and Speaker View in the top right corner of your screen so you can toggle back and forth, but Speaker View will let you look at the candidate as large as possible. So each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement and two minutes for a closing statement. And in between, we will have time for questions and each candidate again will have two minutes to answer the response. Now candidates, if you answer a question and there is still time remaining, you are welcome to address a previous question, perhaps a clarifying or something else that you believe might have been incorrect, as long as you stay within the two-minute timeframe. And you'll notice that countdown clock that you're looking at and I'll interrupt if need be, but two minutes is where we're at. We have received many questions ahead of time. Thank you for all of the people who sent them in. I see now we're already at 140 participants. That's wonderful. We had lots and lots of questions. The candidates will not be able to answer them all. So our question wranglers first took all of the questions and actually compared the questions to the actual responsibilities of our county commissioners to make sure that we're asking questions that fit in the framework of their responsible role should they be elected. In some cases, questions were combined into sort of groupings and topics because they were very related. That way we could address as many policy-related questions as possible. We also have questions that will speak to the candidates' leadership philosophies and decision-making processes. So that's how we went about sorting through the questions that we received ahead of time. Again, on the screen, you'll see a blue box if you'd like to submit a question throughout the debate. You can send it to email at l w v jeff co wa at gmail dot com. And our question wrangler will look at the questions that come in, see if they are perhaps duplicative of ones we already have. We'll try to cover as many topics as possible. If there's one that feels very compelling that we need to insert, she'll send me a list and we'll juggle the questions around. So we'll be able to adjust as quickly as possible, real time. All right, so we're going to start now with our candidates' opening questions or opening statements. And I have each of their names on a piece of paper in this clear bowl. I'm going to turn away and I'm going to pull one out. And the first person, opening statement will be Ms. Smith. Go ahead, you have your two minutes.
All right. Welcome, bienvenidos a todos. I'm Lorna Smith. I thank the League of Women Voters, AAUW, and KPTZ for hosting this event. We need strong leadership on the Board of County Commissioners. I have 25 years of experience as a Snohomish County Manager and Community Activist. I've dealt with complex regulations. We built affordable housing and I helped to remove roadblocks to getting it done. Removing roadblocks to housing is my priority. Home prices rose 49% in three years here. My husband and I moved to Cape George nine years ago. My family has deep ties to Jefferson County. My grandparents were lighthouse keepers here. Much of my life has been rooted in Jefferson County. Early in my career, Eleanor Stoppes and I worked side by side in Washington DC to create Protection Island Wildlife Refuge. For the past seven years, I've worked in collaboration and coordination with my fellow Jefferson County Committee and Commission members solving real problems in our community. There's a reason we have thousands of acres of protected farm and forest lands in Jefferson County. It's because we did it. There's a reason we have a ban on salmon net pens in Washington State. It's because Representative Mike Chapman and I worked with a coalition in Olympia to get it done. There's a reason we have an indoor-only gun range ordinance in Jefferson County. It's because we got it passed. I'm proud of our businesses, schools, nonprofits, and agencies and their response to the current crisis. As Commissioner, I intend to build on their high standard of effective collaboration and innovation. By working together and seizing this moment, our collective resiliency, creativity, and spirit of cooperation will bring about a brighter future for us all. I would be grateful for your vote for Lorna Smith for Commissioner on August 4th.
Thank you. I'm going to pull the next name. Ms. Finaro.
Thank you all. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you this evening. Thank you to all my community members who are watching and listening in. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to KPTZ. It definitely takes a village around here to get things done. I'm very grateful to be part of that village. My name is Amanda Finaro and I want to earn your vote to be the next District 2 County Commissioner. I've worked and lived in this county for the better part of 30 years and I know from my personal experience what it takes to earn a living and to make it here. And how much harder it can be to do that when you're raising a family on the same working class wages. Listen, it doesn't matter if you're a young person just starting out or you're a single parent trying to raise a child or if you happen to be a newly retired person or one of our elders living in the community. There's nothing that's harder than the uncertainty of not knowing where you're going to call home. That's why once elected, I will continue to work tirelessly to increase our inventory of affordable housing units in the county. And I think that many of us can agree that in this COVID pandemic, the backlash and the economic impacts are going to be long-lasting. They're going to be deeper than we could have imagined. That's why I believe that my unique skill of bringing people together and bridging divides in our community is going to be an asset to the people of Jefferson County. I'm experienced at helping in creating jobs and helping to unite and develop relationships of trust between people. We're going to need that for the coalition building that's going to need to take place so that we can tackle the big challenges of infrastructure development and growth for a more sustainable future for all of us. When you vote for Amanda Finaro, your vote for the working families, for the future of Jefferson County.
Thank you. Ms. Eisenhower.
Good evening, everyone, here on Zoom and out in radio land. I'm Heidi Eisenhower. The first thing I want to do is give a big thanks to the League of Women Voters and AAUW for hosting this forum and especially to all of you attendees for being here. I have deep roots in District 2 of Jefferson County. My family moved to Irondale in 1981. I went to local schools and was the first person in my family to graduate from college. We commercially fished for a living, so I grew up on the ocean and in the boatyard. My husband and I have lived here in the heart of Port Hadlock for 20 years and plan to live the rest of our lives out here in our community. I've been seriously planning to run for the seat for the last six years. I knew when to wait when I was asked and now I know when to run. The seat of the idea was actually planted over 20 years ago when I was a member of the Jefferson County Planning Commission that wrote the first comprehensive plan for the county. That experience opened my eyes to what a group of committed community members could do together and gave me a front row seat to the workings of our Board of County Commissioners. Since then, I've taken on increasing roles of increasing responsibility with regional and community organizations and played key roles in business and public projects, including the 2012 remodel of our Jefferson County Library, laying the groundwork for the Chemicham Corner Farm Stand over a decade ago, and just recently developing the first recipe for derelict fiberglass boat recycling in Washington State. Since I announced in April, I've had hundreds of conversations with our neighbors and I have already been endorsed by over 250 of them. I have a clear sense of what they want and that they need an experienced leader who's ready to collaborate and mobilize new ideas while maintaining our quality of life here.
Very much for your opening statements, candidates. And now we're going to move on to questions. And as a reminder to the audience, if you'd like to submit a question, please email it to the blue box, l w v jeff co wa at gmail dot com. So for our questions, we've started obviously with the ones that have been submitted ahead of time. We're going to start in alphabetical order, so I'll start with you, Ms. Eisenhower, then we'll go to Ms. Finaro and Ms. Smith, and then we'll rotate each time so a different person starts first. So, guys, ready? Let's get started. First question. State and local governments face great budget uncertainty in the next few years. Describe your current budget priorities, particularly those regarding social services funding amid the many competing priorities for county dollars.
The budget is the number-one tool commissioners have to enact policy for the county. And it's clear that in this time of the COVID-19 crisis, we're going to have to be critically mindful to the impact of that crisis on our community. One area that we're going to need to focus on is public health and effective programs to take care of our residents in the community. Another area that is a concern of mine has been solid waste. And I think it's an area that we're going to, it's a core service the county provides and we're going to need to be able to provide those core services to our residents as our budget shrinks. So I think focusing on the portions of the county budget that every resident of our county depends upon and figuring out how we can make those parts of the budget whole for our residents would be my priorities.
Thank you. Ms. Finaro.
Thank you. Getting used to the muting and unmuting. Thank you for your patience. The budget is, as has been stated, the key piece of driving policy for the county. I think that in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, it's really clear that we need to be able to take care of people and their well-being and their physical health is the first step. I think another critical piece that needs to be looked at is how we're going to move the dial forward on housing in our community. And the only way that's going to happen is if we can make progress on the Hadlock sewer project. I know the county has tried multiple times to do that and there have been barriers time and again, but I think that making that a priority is going to be the only path forward for increasing housing options. Aside from that, I think that I would want to talk with the department heads of each area within the county and have, you know, along with the county administrator and take a look at the budget. I think those department heads know their budgets well and know where there's places where they can tighten their belts and maybe where they can't. I think that necessary services that families are relying on in our community, whether that's WIC or access for, you know, programs that may be feeding our elderly, those are things that we're going to have to really take a hard look at. I don't have the entire budget in front of me yet, so I don't have the opportunity to do that more fully at this time, but I think that Health and Human Services would be a priority and then how we move people into housing would be a key second for me.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to say that putting budgets together for county government is something I've done over and over and over again, working with the administrative side of things. So I am feeling very well-prepared to be able to analyze the budgets, to work with all the county departments and come up with a workable budget. I've been working closely and following closely the current Board of County Commissioners as they've begun to look at our budget for the rest of 2020 and into 2021. And there actually is some good news there and that's that we're not going to have to be taking deep cuts this year or even next year as we predicted. The general fund budget is probably going to be reduced very little, maybe no more than 6%. And the reason for that is our county commissioners have the foresight to, working with the county administrator, to set up a good rainy day fund to be a buffer against these kind of emergencies. So we're better prepared than we might have been and also our revenues aren't down, you know, so far the projection is that the revenues aren't going to come in as low as they might have. So when I worked with Philip back at Snohomish County, I found him very easy to work with and I really think we're lucky to have somebody heading up the budget process that knows so much about it. One area that does concern me and would be a priority for me is it's possible the funding for our Health and Human Services functions, which comes largely from state and federal funding, could take a hit. And so that would be a priority of mine to work with our legislative delegation, to work with congressional folks, to make sure that we don't see a reduction in services for families, et cetera.
All right. Second question. Given the uncertainty, excuse me, given the centuries of injustice to Black, Indigenous, and other people of color, what role do you see the commissioners playing in correcting these injustices and responding to local race-related issues? We'll start with you, Ms. Finaro.
Oh, boy. Well, that really speaks to my heart. I think that as a leader in our community, no matter what seat of leader you find yourself sitting in, it is really valuable and important that we all really close look right now at what part we can play in deconstructing some of the, oh gosh, just some of the deep-seated positions around white privilege that exist within our community. And I think until we're able to have those really critical conversations, history is destined to repeat itself. It's really important to me that as a community leader in any capacity that I utilize that position to bring people together so that we can have those challenging conversations. I would encourage commissioners to sign off on things that, like the document that Kate had proposed, oh, the name just evaded my thoughts. I'm sorry. We have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to do with our local tribes. We need to improve our relationships with the local tribes. And as a county commissioner, I would be interested in how we can extend that olive branch, how we can work together, how we can continue with our coalition building to do the work that is necessary for our whole region. When it comes to the racism that our people of color in our community have experienced, I think that we have a responsibility to lead by example. I think we have a responsibility as individuals and within our own families and to start there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Eisenhower.
I've had a pretty personal conversation going on the last couple of weeks with myself about this and I feel, I go back and forth from having a place in the conversation to feeling like I don't have a branch to stand on here. And I'm kind of there right now. I feel like this is a time for me to learn and to listen to what's going on in our community and our region and our nation and our world. But in the research I've been doing, I came across an interview with one of the founders of the Black Lives Matter movement, Opal Temetti. And she said something to me that resonated in this time was that when they founded the Black Lives Matter movement in response to the killing of Trayvon Martin, it was at a time when there was a war on Black life. That's why they started the Black Lives Matter movement. And she feels like that this time that we're in right now is something completely different. It's built on a basis of that, but we have all the fragility of the current economic conditions put upon people of all stripes in our world. And that complexity is creating a whole new dialogue about what, where the fragility is in our communities. And I think that's what we need to pay very close attention to as leaders going forward, is listening and supporting where we can and moving forward together because that's the only way that we're going to make a difference is together.
Well, this is a very timely and topical question that was just submitted by one of our participants. What is your preferred approach to ensuring everyone in District 2 has access to high-quality internet service? We'll start with you, Ms. Smith.
Renee, I'd like to answer the previous question. I didn't get an opportunity.
Did I miss you? I'm so sorry.
Okay, so I'm going to answer that question.
My apologies. I got handed the new one. I was so excited about the new one that I'd forgotten the second one. Please go ahead and answer the first question.
Okay, I want to make sure that I don't skip over this question because this issue is extremely important to me. I have been on the front lines marching and speaking up for people of color and for women's rights and LGBTQ rights for years. And my family is very multiracial. I have a black granddaughter, so these issues are personal and heartfelt to me. As a county commissioner, I think that we need to review our policies in Jefferson County, starting with our policing. I've actually had conversations with Sheriff Joe Knoll where, you know, he is open to the idea that the sheriff might not be the best place to respond to some of the emergencies that arise in our community. For instance, when somebody's in a mental health crisis or a drug overdose, it might not be the sheriff's office that ought to be going and dealing with that situation. So I think we need to look at that. We need to review all of our policies for how we fire, how we hire and fire, and how we recruit candidates. When I worked at county government previously, I made a real effort to go to job fairs, for instance, that were being held by, you know, in the inner city and make myself available to answer questions about job openings, reach out to communities of color and let them know that their job applications would be very welcome and that our job place would be a very welcoming place for them to be. So those are some of the steps that I would take. I'm actually going to have a piece in the Leader tomorrow that speaks to this very issue, which is extremely important to me.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates, for those answers. Now to the next one. Again, this was submitted by someone this evening. You've got the blue square, who would like to submit a question. What is your preferred approach to ensuring everyone in District 2 has access to high-quality internet service? So now, Ms. Smith, it'll be your turn to answer this question first.
Okay. The COVID crisis has certainly pointed out the extreme need for all of us to be connected by high-speed internet, to witness this evening even. And the fact that our schools this summer were having to, or not this summer, but the spring, were having to attempt to learn online when many of the students didn't have internet service or didn't have the right equipment. So I'm committed to work with the PUD, to our community, and to the service providers to eliminate the roadblocks that we've been stumbling over, trying to get high speed to everybody on the peninsula. It simply has to happen and I'm committed to seeing it through. The PUD has done a study. It's online and they researched what those impediments are. And even though much of the fiber cable is already available, the PUD is prohibited from actually going into a retail service business to sell that service. So we need to incentivize those private companies from coming in and providing that service to the rural areas. That's been the biggest stumbling block and so I'm going to continue to work with the PUD and help them push that plan forward.
Thank you. Ms. Eisenhower.
I've been hearing about the broadband issue a lot in conversations with people I'm having in the community, with my coworkers at the Maritime Center. We're all using broadband every day, some of us eight to 10 hours a day. And I feel like this issue is only going to become more pressing over the next few years as people have become accustomed to being able to work from home and there's hundreds of articles out there about how the new way of work may be much more virtual and from home. I think that this would be a top priority to figure out solutions for getting broadband to all the residents of the county. And I think that we could look to other communities around the state that have done it effectively. I've heard of things like wireless towers and are there other, are there other things that we haven't thought of here that other communities have done effectively to supply broadband? to supply broadband to all of their residents? I think that there's probably state and federal funding that can be leveraged into the community to help develop this infrastructure. And I think that would be a top, 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 top priority of mine.
Thank you. Ms. Fenaro.
Communication is critical. If we aren't able to communicate with each other, all of the issues that we're dealing with on a global scale become even more challenging. I'm committed to making sure that we find a way to bring broadband to every resident of Jefferson County. It's important that our young people be able to succeed in school. And that means every child, every child in our community. Broadband is also an issue of equity. It's a place where very often that divide of the haves and the have-nots can come into play and impact people both in their ability to work, to work from home, the difference in having to choose whether you're going out and working away from home in a time of crisis, or whether or not you're able to stay at home and work. And I think that that needs to be brought into the conversation and to shine light on how important the issue of bringing broadband to our county is. I also see that there's an opportunity that through building relationships with the PUD, it's not necessarily the job of the county commissioners to make sure that we have broadband, but it is the job of, I believe, of leaders to bring other leaders together to make it work. So if we bring in the PUD and we bring in the port who's able to be an ISP, it gives us a place where we can do a handful of things. We can create jobs for residents in Jefferson County. We can make sure all of our kids have access to quality education and high-speed internet that will help them get there. It can attract other revenue-generating jobs to the county that otherwise may not come here. It's a critical piece of the conversation, and I look forward to having an opportunity to be at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Fourth question. So this question relates to affordable housing. Please describe one specific initiative you would like to move forward that will lead to more affordable housing and explain why this initiative would be your housing-related priority. So we'll circle back around, and we'll start first with you, Ms. Eisenhour.
Housing is a fundamental need for every member of our community. And there's been a lot of good work done on affordable housing in our community by our county. And Ms. Fenaro was on the Affordable Housing Committee for the county and did awesome work there. Then also, the Housing Solutions Network has developed a number of committees that have been digging into individual solutions and coming up with recommendations. I think that there are a lot of innovative ideas out there, and I don't think that any one solution is going to be the answer. I don't think it's just going to be the Haddock Sewer. I don't think it's just going to be ADUs, people developing ADUs on their homes. I think that the number-one job of the county commissioners and the county is to allow for the development of affordable housing. And I think we're going to need to review all of our permitting processes and look for a way to streamline the approval of affordable housing for the hundreds of families in our community who need it. I think that there was a survey done where up to 300 additional housing units were needed in our community over the coming years. And I think that it's incumbent upon us as leaders in the county and your Board of County Commissioners to figure out how to make that happen. And that would be a huge priority of mine. I have a number of friends and colleagues who have struggled with housing security over the last 12 to 24 months. And I've helped a number of them individually work through their issues and find housing. But that's not going to be the way it's going to be solved for the majority of our citizens. And I think it's incumbent upon us to figure it out.
So I'm trying to unmute you, Ms. Fenaro. I don't know if you can hear me. There you go.
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you. Thank you. I was waiting. Housing is obviously very near and dear to my heart. I remember renting a house, you know, in town for $300 a month back in the 90s. That is never going to happen again here, folks. As I've been sitting on our Affordable Housing and Homeless Housing Task Force, we did identify a study that was done back in 2015. And there are 376 units of housing that'll be needed by 2036. That's 16 years from now. We have built almost no new family housing in the past 20 years, folks. I think we are in a critical, critical place. I see it being the job of the county commissioners to definitely step in and work alongside with the city to come up with solutions that make sense. There are some common sense solutions available. And if we work together, I think that we can crack the nut on them. Key priorities are going to be around dealing with our permitting and office and the Department of Community Development in conjunction with our septic codes and working with the onsite sewage codes. Those two things are lockstep in how and when and where builders can build in our community, when things can be improved and when they can't. The Haddock Sewer project is a part of that. And those things can't really be completely untangled. But I think that as a commissioner, I would like to be able to get them all out on the table where we can clearly look at them and dig into them. And I know that that's going to take staff time, but we've already shown through the task force that we can bring people together, and the community is willing to help us get the work done because it benefits us all.
When I worked in Kristna Homish County, I worked in the land development arena for many years. And I helped to build affordable housing projects by identifying and helping to address some of the regulatory roadblocks that were in the way to seeing those on the ground. So I'm pleased to say that I was able to work with the designers and work with the permitting agencies to kind of learn up ahead what was going to be required and make sure that all the boxes were checked, everybody was on the same page, and there were no surprises. And I think that regulatory roadblocks are still part of the problem when it comes to getting affordable housing units built on the ground. I'm hearing from a lot of people that they feel like the permitting process is not predictable and it's not applied uniformly. I'm not sure that's a totally fair criticism of Department of Community Development, but as the county commissioner who has had experience in this arena, I would like to work with DCD to make sure that staff is all trained, you know, to use the same, apply the same rules to everybody, to be able to find the flexibility that might exist in the code and help guide permit applicants where they can use that flexible part of the code. These are the kind of things that can really get in the way of making projects happen. I've done it. I know how to see it's done. I've written regulations. I've worked with regulations for much of my career. And I will certainly look forward to working with DCD and the community to make that happen.
Hi, I'm one of the question wranglers. My name is Angela, and I'm going to go ahead and do the question real quick here. Many are dissatisfied with the approval processes for new septic systems and new home construction. Please describe your personal experience with the septic and/or construction approval process and describe ways you'd like to change the permitting and inspection process.
Okay, well, that is clearly right up my alley. I've been, so I am the Operations Officer for Good Man Sanitation. We provide septic inspections for many people throughout Jefferson County and then work very closely with the other two local companies who do so. Both, I guess there's actually three other companies. But this is right in my wheelhouse. I talk with many of you residents and neighbors on a very regular basis and builders, contractors, who are dealing with what it takes to get those permits approved. And the inspection process in particular is related to a state mandate that inspections happen either on an annual basis or on an every-three-year basis, whether dependent on the style of septic system that you have in place. I think that the county has done a lot of good work to move us toward having working systems that keep wastewater from going into our streams and our rivers and into our bay. But I think that there may be some fine tweaking that the county can do because I believe that our county has more stringent septic codes than maybe any other county in the state. And I'm interested in having those be really streamlined in alignment with the statewide codes. I'm not sure if I'm over time because I'm not seeing the timer. I'm going to go ahead and stop my answer at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Fenaro. And now you, Ms. Smith.
Yes, so the timer, there, it's back up again. Okay. Septic permitting and, you know, sewer provisions in this county are certainly one of the stumbling blocks to affordable housing going forward, as we all know. And many of those regulations do come down from the state. I have heard from so many people, though, that it is difficult to get a very predictable answer for just exactly what is required. My sister recently had to deal with this here in Jefferson County, trying to get, she was going to buy a particular piece of property and had to actually give up because the process was, kind of kept changing underneath her feet. So we do have an issue here, definitely in Jefferson County when it comes to permitting new septic systems. But I would also say that I think we need to look at some alternatives to the standard septic design. Many countries in Europe have gone to using alternative wastewater systems. Some of them are using composting toilets and where the maintenance is provided by an outside service, kind of like Ms. Fenaro's business does. So I think we need to work with the state and see what flexibility we have to use some alternative systems. And I would be in favor of doing a pilot project. Let's try it and see if we can make some of these systems work for us. Simply to tackle this problem of affordable housing throughout the county, we need to have some better answers for this problem.
Thank you. And Ms. Eisenhower.
A concern that I've long been familiar with is the failing septic systems along our marine waterways. And it's been a huge problem in the Hood Canal region and in the Greater Puget Sound region with rapidly urbanizing populations and aging septic systems. So there's an underlying environmental narrative about the age of our septic systems and getting better systems in place. I think that we need to review what other counties have done because I've heard other counties, the processes are much more efficient. I've heard this over and over again from builders and home builders in our community. And I would want to look at what those permitting processes are and what makes things go more quickly in those communities. I have had personal experience in this county with the septic approval process. My family actually was developing a piece of property and got a septic system approved and then built the septic system. And then it was inspected and we were told we couldn't use it. So it's just this kind of building clear expectations about what you want people to do and then driving to functional septic systems being installed. The other thing is I have a number of friends who have installed and even permitted composting toilets and alternative waste management systems. And I think that those are wonderful ways to deal with the issue, oftentimes much more affordably than conventional septic systems. So I would say we need to look at a mixture of solutions for this problem, but the permitting process needs to be addressed.
The next question. County commissioners represent county interests on many state and regional boards. Which will be your priority and why? And we'll start with Ms. Smith for this question.
The Board of County Commissioners meets mostly once a year to go over those committee assignments. And, you know, as the new commissioner on the block, I'll be working with my fellow commissioners to see where the needs are and also wanting to, you know, use my own strengths and background. So I'm an ecologist. And so any of the committees that dealt with environment and ecology, certainly I would be interested in. I believe in collaborative processes. I would like to do some of the interfacing with the tribes. I'm very interested about working with the community on the Haddock Sewer. So I would be looking at committees' assignments that, you know, went along those lines. I've had a fair amount of experience also working with our congressional delegation. And I know that Commissioner Dean has been doing a fair amount of that. Maybe I would be sharing some of those responsibilities with her. So I'll end there.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And now, Ms. Eisen. Ms. Eisenhower, please.
Thank you. I witnessed just last week the county commissioners discussing an appointment to a committee. So I know it's very much an organic conversation that happens among the members of the county as new opportunities come up. So I would imagine that that would continue happening that way. My thoughts about which committees I would want to sit on, there are about 45 external boards and committees that the commissioners sit on. So that would average about 15 each. And that's a huge commitment of time. But it seems like it would be logical that we would look to committees, for me, that would relate to District 2. So the Haddock Sewer, maybe the Navy Military Liaison. Also, potentially easy ones for me to take on would be ones that David was vacating. And things I would be interested in. I've been going to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and it's something that I'm very interested in and would be interested in serving on that committee. I think that there are also probably opportunities to look at what collaborations and committees aren't happening right now that could benefit the work of the greater county. So there's logical places where this COVID-19, the response to COVID-19. I know right now the port and the city and the PUD and the county have formed a kind of task force to look at the response and resiliency coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic, if we are ever actually coming out of it. But looking at how we're going to live through this time together and be resilient and resourceful. I think that that's the kind of thing that I would like to see us doing whenever things come up that we need to dig in and do together.
Thank you very much, Ms. Eisenhower. And now, Ms. Fenaro, please.
I think that I, you know, I will be serving, I guess, in whatever capacity the county best thinks that I need to serve in. So I obviously have a lot of experience with onsite sewage and permitting. And, you know, I'm the vice president for our Jefferson County Home Builders Association. So I'm fairly knowledgeable about the challenges that our home builders are facing. I would say anything that connects through building sewer projects, analyzing and looking at onsite sewage, maybe DCD. I definitely would love the opportunity to continue in David's capacity on the Affordable Housing and Homeless Housing Task Force. We've done some really great work there, and I would like to be able to continue in that work. I know that, you know, there's going to be other projects coming up with the county as we transition through the pandemic. So, you know, I have to agree with Ms. Eisenhower that building some sensible expectations for what our response to that looks like and what community resiliency looks like, not just within our county, but in a regional capacity, how we partner with Clallum County, how we partner with our cohorts through the tribes on the west end and on the north end of the peninsula and all parts in between. You know, for all intents and purposes, we live on an island that's connected by a bridge and a little thumb of land and through a vast wilderness. And when it comes down to it, the only people we can count on are ourselves. And when it comes down to it, the only people we can count on are ourselves, each other, and our neighbors. And so any way I can help build relationships with our neighbors is of most interest to me.
Our next question will start with Ms. Eisenhower. As the county moves forward with plans for the Irondale and Port Hadlock Urban Growth Area Wastewater System, also known as the Hadlock Sewer, what outreach strategies will you use with residents and businesses to address their concerns over zoning changes and costs?
Well, this issue is in my front yard. I live one block from the current boundary of the Phase One Hadlock Sewer area. And I have come home to people sitting in my yard in the rain with newspapers on their heads wanting to talk about this already. So I'm getting a little bit of a glimpse of what the Jabba County Commissioner actually is out here in District Two. The sewer is an issue of much concern in the community and something that I know we've been working on for decades now. I think that outreach to the community and not just to a limited set of landowners in who own land in that district or that that urban core of Hadlock is going to be critical. I know there are a number of people who feel like they haven't been listened to and haven't been heard. And maybe it's because they were engaged a decade ago in the conversation, but I think we we need regular opportunities for residents of District Two to give input into this project as it's developed. I know a ton of great work has been done and a lot of groundwork has been laid for our sewer in Hadlock. And I think it would be a fantastic solution for developing more affordable housing and developing the kind of density we need to accommodate that. I am not anti-development. I actually think that having more dense urban development protects the open spaces around the more densely developed areas. And I think that Hadlock is a logical place to do that, to build multifamily housing and to allow maybe for tiny houses. So I think engaging more of the community in the conversation is a top priority.
Thank you, Ms. Eisenhower. Next, Ms. Finaro, please.
Thank you. As I've said before, you know, the sewer is a critical piece to being able to increase our inventory of affordable housing. And frankly, we have no choice. The Growth Management Act has dictated that our county must build a sewer. So in some form or fashion, we have to contend with that. You know, I've had conversations with the sitting county commissioners and repeatedly asked, there's no way out of the Growth Management Act, question mark. I've been told that that we have to we have to deal with what's in front of us. I think that we can advocate for ourselves and we can change and limit potentially the scope of the the size of sewer project that we build. You know, I've referenced several times that I certainly don't want to do what Belfair has done and bankrupt our county because we cannot afford to run a full-scale water treatment facility like they have in Port Angeles. That's that's not feasible economically for who we are as a community, at least not based on the information that I've gathered. We are still going to have to remove the solids. They're still going to be have to have to be transported out of the county unless we can come up with some other technology that is suitable for that. It's 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 going to happen. And so the question is, is how do we do it in a way that most respects the neighbors that then also allows us to build the density that we're looking for? I'm interested in exploring some out-of-the-box ideas about yes sewer and then, you know, some of the Oscar systems for onsite sewage, looking at large onsite sewage options that can be run through the state. I think that there are many ways to skin a cat, and we're going to come up with them.
Thank you, Ms. Finaro. And now Ms. Smith, please.
Fortunately, the Growth Management Act doesn't tie us to building a sewer in Port Hadlock. We did designate an urban growth area there, and we had 20 years from the time of that designation to either put in all the essential public services or lose the designation as an urban growth area. So I think that's maybe where some of the confusion comes in. We're a long ways from having the Hadlock Sewer on the ground. And in my view, we're a whole long ways from having done enough interaction with the community on that. When I worked at Snohomish County, I did charrettes around siding a huge sewer project, the Brightwater Sewer Project on the King County Snohomish Line. And eventually, the community came around to actually being part of the team that wanted this to happen. We were able to build in some amenities that the community wanted. But the bottom line is, right now, we're nowhere near having identified where the funding is going to come from that would bring the project cost down so that the individual assessments hook up costs and then costs to buy these individual grinders would be within reach for a number of people. I've met with the community out there, and I've told the folks that I've met with that I will definitely dedicate myself to making sure that as the project moves forward, no one is in danger of losing their home, no one is bankrupted by this project. So there there needs to be continual public involvement and outreach and listening to the community on this project. It has the potential to bring benefits to the county, certainly. Sewers do allow denser development, but we need we need to hear from the community all the way along.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And I believe Renee is back on the system.
I am with old technology. It's called a telephone. It's wonderful. So our next question. So this is a very timely one as well. The Jefferson County Sportsman's Association firing range has been in operation in the county since 1962 and makes its range available to local law enforcement for firearms training. What is your stance on fire ranges in the county? And I believe you will be first up, Ms. Eisenhower.
I believe it was my turn for a question.
I may well be off cycle, so if that's correct.
Am I right, Heidi?
I think I went first last time, so.
Okay.
F comes after E. So there you go, girl.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So it's important for residents to have a safe place to learn, to use, and discharge their firearms. I, you know, the Jefferson County Sportsman's Association has been a part of our community for a very long time. Many, many people in our community have learned to use their rifles and and whatnot for hunting at that location. I'm glad that the county has allowed for them to have the space of time to utilize the funding they need to try to do some noise suppression. I don't think I think that most people who live in Jefferson County would agree that it it makes good sense to have a safe space for us to to discharge firearms. I'm not interested in seeing paramilitary facilities built on our peninsula, though. I don't think that 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 has a place in in our Olympic National Forests or close to them. And that's that's where I pretty much stand on it. I am going to I would like to use just the quick remainder of my time to come back to to the question on on the sewer project, something that was a bit troubling for me in the around the Growth Management Act specifically. As I understand it, if we do not build the sewer, we don't have a space to create the kind of density that we need to be able to build multi-unit family housing. So taking that off of the table, I think, puts us at a higher risk to be more housing poor, so to speak, than we currently are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finaro. Next would be Ms. Smith.
While I was on the Jefferson County Planning Commission, a seat I still hold, we took up this issue, as I think most of you know, of shooting ranges in the county, the citing and permitting of commercial shooting facilities. Because the Jefferson County Sportsman's Club is a grandfathered in use in the county, that was not something we we took on as the Planning Commission, nor did the Board of County Commissioners take it on. They renewed their permit for quite a few years, I want to say 20 years, it might even have been longer, 40 years perhaps. They are doing some noise abatement there. I know the community still has some concerns about noise, which I think needs to I think they need to be listened to. But I agree, we need a safe place for our sportsmen and our police, whoever wants to use that facility for practicing firearms. In our society, where firearms are so prevalent, we all would agree we need safe places to practice them. However, I was the one who wrote the ordinance that would allow only indoor commercial shooting facilities to be sited in the county in the future. And my reason for for doing that and taking it on was that in examining where in the county on on private lands these facilities could go, there simply was no place in rural Jefferson County where they wouldn't have severe impacts on surrounding areas, on our rural lifestyles, on our water quality, et cetera. So I'm very proud of the fact that I worked with the Planning Commission to get that passed, the Planning Commission, and then the Board of County Commissioners also passed it unanimously.
First thing I want to say is I'm not opposed to guns. I come from a family of responsible hunters and fishers. It's just part of who I am. And yes, we absolutely need a safe place for people to learn and practice using firearms. I tracked the issue with the Tarbu gun range closely, mostly because out of my care for the natural environment of that place. As Executive Director of the Land Trust, I was a lead advocate for the expansion of the DeBob Bay Natural Area Preserve Boundary that allowed for the protection of hundreds of more acres of land in that beautiful area, part of our county. And that was the primary concern that I was tracking that issue. I think that the solution that Ms. Smith and the Planning Commission came to was artful and wonderful. I think it's a good solution for that particular situation. I think that in the future, every single situation needs to be looked at individually. And it's not something that I would want to make a broad sweeping statement about, that all shooting ranges are fine if they're indoors, or all shooting ranges are fine if they're a certain scale. I think each one needs to be looked at individually. I also agree with what the commissioners said in their deliberations about the ordinance and that the county has wide swaths of public land, such as Olympic National Forest, and ample private land in which outdoor shooting is allowed. So I think that I don't think we need more shooting ranges in our county personally and would not be a big advocate for those. But I think that that we have plenty of opportunity for practicing safe firearm discharge.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to the next question. This one has to do with demographics in our county. Though outreach to and from citizens is a challenge even without social distancing, and many people in their 20s, 30s, and 40s are juggling multiple jobs, starting businesses, raising families, and they may have little time or energy to advocate for their positions. What is your outreach plan for the younger members of this community? And I think you were up first, Ms. Smith.
I have a lot of members of our younger community, if you will, already supporting my campaign, I think because my views align with theirs so well. First of all, I have deep concern for working families and their ability to continue to find living wage jobs in the county and for affordable housing. But beyond that, I'm really proud of our, you know, younger generation, if you will, that are out there on the streets, that are demonstrating on behalf of Black Lives Matter, that are out leading the charge on so many changes, climate change. I brought, you know, I went to the high school's climate change demonstration and just brought tears to my eyes to see those eloquent teenagers speaking up for our planet. And they know that that's my background, too. I've always been an environmental activist. I've lived my values. I've been out there on the front lines testifying and protesting. They know that about me. So I think that's one of the reasons I've seen a lot of young people gravitate already to my campaign, and I'm continuing to to reach out to them. We've are, like all of us in this day and age, our campaign's gone almost entirely online, and we're using all of the available, you know, avenues for communication, of course, Facebook, Instagram, emails, et cetera, et cetera, YouTube videos. And so that's the way we're staying in in communication. And I'm inviting feedback from from them also as on issues that are important to them in the campaign.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next, Ms. Eisenhower.
Thank you. Well, I grew up in this community, so I was a young activist in this community. I was actually appointed to the Planning Commission when I was 26 by then County Commissioner Richard Voight, who was my science teacher at Timoco Middle School. So I have been a young, active member of our community, and now I'm a middle-aged active member of our community. And some of the frustrations I can remember feeling were that a lot of times meetings were at night, and I couldn't get to the meetings, or they lasted for three or four hours. And that wasn't really acceptable for a kid who had to do her homework or the parents who had to schlep her to and from the meeting. So that's for really younger. You were asking about kind of in the 20 to 40 range. But I think that at all levels, our community has proven that they're passionate and active. We have volunteers at the Northwest Maritime Center who are teenagers who come every week when we're not closed down to volunteer and help help in ways that they can on our campus. And I think that being creative about how we engage younger members of our community and rising to their occasion. One one young person I know recently told me I needed to do a TikTok video for my campaign. And then I just, you know, I'm like, what's TikTok? Or have you heard about Hustle? And I, these are things I don't know about, but I think that I'm going to learn about them. And I have now learned about those two apps. But I think being current and using the technologies that different age groups are using to reach those populations will be an important pivot in our community, especially as we come through this time of so much virtual communication. How are we going to be increasingly creative in the way we reach out to people?
Thank you. And Ms. Finaro.
So I I have a house full of pre-teens teenagers currently. I lived here as a teenager. I lived here in my 20s, lived here in my 30s. I've been a mom here, kind of run the gamut of this. Was one of the key reasons why developing and being one of the founding members of our Young Professionals Network with the Jefferson County Chamber of Commerce was so critical because young people in our community are often asked to show up, to have a voice, and to donate their time. I think that some of the things that I would love to see happen is kind of a reframing of how, as the Board of County Commissioners, how, I don't know if it's possible to change the time of meetings. All-day meetings on a Monday morning are really challenging for most working people to be able to attend, let alone if you have young children at home, and young people often can't be there. I think having options for childcare at any public meeting ever, always, is a way that you can engage young families. I think it's really critical that we start having a conversation within the community about paying people for their work. And this doesn't just go for our young professionals and our and our young people, but there And this doesn't just go for our young professionals and our, and our young people, but there are plenty of amazing volunteer opportunities within our local nonprofits. But frankly, we can't all be asked to work for free. And some of us who are just trying to pay our rent and buy groceries for next week can't necessarily donate 20 hours a week of our time or spend a lot of time on a project for a local nonprofit or a cause and not get paid in real money to then pay our rent to buy those groceries. So kind of helping reframe that conversation is something that interests me greatly.
Thank you so much. We're going to try to get one more question in before our closing statements. So this last question, and try to be concise if you could. When you have strongly held views about a topic, what could a constituent do that would cause you to change your mind? And I think this question goes first to you, Ms. Eisenhower.
So I think the most important thing to do is to listen. And if you're really listening, your mind might be changed. One thing that I've learned as an environmental scientist is that evidence is helpful at times for crafting a convincing argument. I think that I've proven over my years in the community that I'm a good listener and an effective network builder, drawing in all the opinions of people who care about an issue. I think the most important thing, though, that we can do is listen, is really listen openly to what people have to bring and be open to our minds being changed. I think that that's a critical trait in a leader and something that as a county commissioner, I would bring to the table in spades. And I still have a minute.
Okay.
All right. We're going to try to get to the closing statement. So Ms. Finaro, if you could be brief as well. Thank you.
Sure. I think that curiosity is key and I try to approach every situation as a leader with a sense of curiosity. I don't like to make assumptions of, of what the outcome or the intention was. And I think when community members approach me, they often find that I ask them a lot of questions. And it's because I really, I have a genuine deep curiosity about what motivates people. And sometimes when someone's very, for example, when someone's really frustrated with a, with an outcome or something that they're seeing happen, I find that being able to engage them and get to the why, the why they're upset, sometimes it doesn't have to do with the thing that they're voicing as the problem. And so staying in that place of curiosity for me helps, helps me to have my mind changed and to deepen that relationship with the people that I'm interacting with. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Smith.
Well, I've always been a listener and a learner my whole life. I've also relied pretty heavily on my ability to do research and I've always invited people to bring me information on new topics so I can learn and then know how to ask the right questions. I think that's just how you have to always approach these things. In my last six years on the planning commission, that's certainly how I have approached all those issues. And certainly, you know, for instance, on the gun range issue, I did a lot of research and that's really what led me to the, the solution that we all finally landed on. But listening is a very key part of that. Collaborating is a very big part of that. I never have all the answers myself. And when I meet with people from different areas, for instance, sitting down with the tribes and, and getting their perspective, I often hear something I wasn't expecting to hear at all that definitely changed my mind on things. So keeping an open mind is probably the very most important thing and, and keeping those good listening skills, ears open, walk, walk a mile in somebody else's shoes and that can, that could change your mind on things.
Thank you so much and thank you, candidates, for all being brief on that last question. I appreciate it. And we're really right on time. I've turned my camera back on with fingers crossed that things will continue to work. We've got the phone and the computer and all of that. And I have the white bowl again, so, or the clear bowl. I'm going to reach in and draw one of your names to see who will have the first opportunity for the closing statement. And this will go to you, Ms. Smith.
All right. As we've seen enormous challenges lie ahead for our economy and our community, meeting and rising above these challenges isn't going to be easy. It's going to, it's going to require the effort of our entire community. But I believe in us. I believe in the power of our community. I believe in the future of our fantastic, unique county. As your county commissioner, you can count on me to lead with vision, integrity and grit and to work collaboratively with our wise elders, young families and the youth leaders that are now stepping up to show us a new direction. I believe if we all work together and listen to each other, we can forge a shining future for Jefferson County. The August 4th primary is coming soon and I'd be honored if you would vote for Lorna Smith for Commissioner. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And this goes to you, Ms. Eisenhower.
Thank you, Renee. Well, I'll leave you with these thoughts. I have the right tools in my toolbox, including multiple leadership positions with thriving local nonprofit organizations, small business management and demonstrated resourcefulness in helping businesses and community institutions thrive. I've managed budgets of all scales and this is a part of the job that I would really look forward to digging into. My colleagues and friends know me as dependable and hardworking. My 40 years of community building here affords me a vast network of people of all stripes who live in and care about our home. All three of these factors combined make me the best candidate for this time. In the words of a prominent farmer in District Two, "Heidi just knows us." Currently, I'm Chief Operations Officer for the Northwest Maritime Center. And over the past few months, we have navigated the COVID-19 crisis, moving from a staff of almost 50 to now a skeleton crew tasked with maintaining and rebuilding our organization. I have a front seat row for the impact of this crisis and am deeply concerned about the growing number of our neighbors who are finding themselves unemployed or significantly underemployed. After years of an unemployment rate that stayed between 4% and 6%, Jefferson County unemployment jumped to 15% between March and May. The COVID-19 crisis has clearly illustrated the need for a web of community resources working collaboratively to create a safety net for our neighbors. Our economy is fragile. Housing and food security are areas of increasing concern. I have proven experience in developing collaborative solutions, building the right network to mobilize them and seeing them to fruition. I would love to spend time with any of you talking about the time ahead in Jefferson County and critically what your ideas are. It's going to take all of us rowing together to get through the waters ahead. And finally, I'd just like to thank the League and AAUW for hosting this evening's forum. I know how much effort went into this process behind the scenes and I'm grateful for all of your efforts. Thank you, everyone.
Ms. Finaro.
Thank you to my beloved Jefferson County community. I love getting to sit with you and have this opportunity to speak to all of you. I hope that I earn your vote. I believe in my heart that I am the best fit for this position. I know that my committed work, both as your chamber president, as the developer of the Young Professionals Network, helping our school districts, working on the Supportable Housing Task Force, working for Reproductive Rights for Women, marching in the streets, none of those things have I ever been paid to do. I've always done them because I believe in this community deeply. All the while, raising a family, just like many of you, and working and running a small business in critical times, employing many people who are also supporting families. That makes me unique in this moment. I'm also happy and honored to be endorsed by the Native American Caucus of Washington State Democrats and also by the North Olympic Peninsula Farm Bureau and two of our former sitting county, or formerly sitting Jefferson County Commissioners. I hope that I can count on your vote on August 4th in District Two. All of our District Two neighbors get to get out and vote. And I hope to move into the general election in November and be there to represent our whole county. I thank you for your time this evening. I thank the League, I thank KPTZ, thank you so much for broadcasting this. I dreamed of a radio station in the 90s that would be local. I'm so glad we have it now. I appreciate the local papers for taking the time to do this. Renee, thank you for sticking with us through the challenges of technology and I hope you all have a wonderful evening. Good night.
Candidates, I cannot thank you enough for sharing your views and stepping forward. This is such an important time in our county, our state, nationwide. So it's really remarkable when people have the courage and I want to commend each of you for running for office. This is, this is a big deal and you are to be thanked for it.
Thanks for that.
So a few things. We have recorded this forum and this is going to be posted on YouTube in a couple of days. Demistano should have it up. He said in a couple of days, maybe as early, sooner than that, but we'll give him, we'll give him a couple of days for that. So if you're interested in finding that recording, you could go to Demistano and that's spelled D-A-N-E-A-U and it'll take you to his channel where you can find this video. I'd also like to mention that future league forums for other offices, both the primary and the general elections, will be posted on the local League's website, which of course is LWVWA.org/Jefferson. And also, for the first time, Jefferson County voters will be able to watch and hear forums for statewide office. And we know that forums for the 6th Congressional District and the 24th Legislative District are being planned. So please go ahead and submit your questions for those races and you could send them to that number that we've been, the email we've been using, which is LWVJEFCOWA@gmail.com. I want to thank AAUW and the League of Women Voters for hosting these candidates. They're so, so important for all of us to learn about these candidates and to get to know the issues. Please keep the questions coming. The candidates will be out many more times, I'm sure, over the next several weeks and months ahead. So I also want to thank all of you who have listened in tonight, who are watching this by Zoom or listening to it later on YouTube. Huge thanks to the volunteers, Angela especially, for stepping in when my technology was failing me despite all of the things that we set in place. Thank you to all who have worked so hard, many, many names, so I won't mention them all, but thank you all for volunteering. Thank you, the candidates. Good luck to all of you. And thank you to Jefferson County for listening in tonight. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.